This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Easthampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 18th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on chatter channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in these meetings are gathering hybrid on the extended order until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both, the member of the city council and the public participating remote remain immune under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of this meeting unless you are participating in public speak time. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham, here. Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Dave Munier, Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerat.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the lead.
Praise the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of the minutes. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minute of October 4th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who want in favor?
Aye.
Any again, abstention? Motion passes. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic, not least on the public hearing. So we don't have any public hearing tonight. If you're here to support anything that is on the agenda or talk about something that we have on the agenda, or anything you want to address to the council, this is the time to do it. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and please go to the podium. And if you participate remote, can you please raise your hands? Anyone for the public? Go to the podium, please.
Did you say two minutes?
Three.
I will give you three.
He's feeling generous.
Jim O'Donnell, I live in Cliffhue Manor.
Can you please do it again now that you're in the microphone?
Pardon me?
Can you please do it again that you're in the microphone now, so that way people can...
Jim O'Donnell, I live in Cliffhue Manor. I was hit by a car yesterday. I'm fine, thank you. Coming down Cottage Street. Coming downhill down Cottage Street. Empty parking spaces on my right, so I'm over by the curb. Nobody in the oncoming lane, so there's room to go around me. But this individual creeping beside me. Suddenly they tooted their horn. It scared me. I hit the brakes. I slipped on the wet pavement and I went down. And the car ran over my bike wheels. Little damage to the bike, but I'm okay. Why do I bring this up here? The street's too damn narrow. We all know that. It is a problem and it's not going away. My idea, and others have said, oh, that sounds good, is to make Cottage Street one way in the uphill direction and rotary traffic in the other direction down Chapel Street and Maple Street. And I mentioned this to one councillor and the response was, well, we couldn't do that because the neighborhood would take a beating on the roads. Well, I guess that guy hadn't been in that neighborhood in any time in the last 50 years because, I mean, there's scrub coming up through every opening in the pavement and, you know, in fact, I ride my bike down that way and it's painful to my underside because of all the bumps. And then another councillor had response that, oh, we couldn't do that because there's a telephone pole on the curve and trucks couldn't get by. Now, I don't know how the school buses may do, but if there's a telephone pole in the way, if you have a problem, obstructive thinking says we can't. Corporate mindset, we've always done it this way. But in a progressive community, we think of ways to work on these things. And so we move the damn telephone pole. Maybe the wires need work anyway. And, you know, the neighborhood would benefit from having the roadway resurfaced and all. When somebody's coming through town, it does not make a good impression on people. And the other thing was, we got to wait until we figure out, oh, we're going to do a Maple Street school. Why? Why would that stop us? And I could see a parking garage there. By the way, I looked up from Cottage Street at the skyline, the Mills, the new building and the brass cat and up. And the architect who put the new building there is brilliant. I looked up and it looked great. The skyline is symmetrical and consistent. And the parking garage would go right along with that on the upside end of the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Will Bundy. I'm from 116 Pleasant Street. I'm the owner of the Eastworks building. And I'm just wanted to thank the committee for, the council for considering the resolution that's coming from the property committing regarding changing the language for the easements that the city and I share behind my building. And what this is going to accomplish updating this easement is that it's going to bring the Mill District, at least our properties in the Mill District aligned with the new zoning changes that were the zero lot lines. We have already been approved by the planning board to have four parcels of our building separated out. But without the change in the easement language, we will not be able to get the financing that the zero lot lines would get us for the projects we have going on. The key to zero lot lines is that allows for more clear financial possibilities. And the easement language was not written for that. What's at stake here is, for us, is about 90,000 square feet. It sort of dovetails with something that we've worked on for the last 25 years, which is both economic development, job creation, and more critically for this 90,000 square feet, there's a large component of housing. I'm very pleased with the response I've received in terms of the perspective from the mayor, the planning department and the property committee. But I want to just express the urgency and the importance of this decision tonight and what it lays out for us. We have several large businesses that are planning to move into those spaces. The feasibility of that is dependent on those things happening. We're very excited. I mean, it's going to be a very dynamic change for the back of the Mill District there. And, but it's also, a 50,000 square foot building is being separated out that will represent right now, where you're looking at 43 units of housing. All of this is something that I've worked on for years and years and years and until zero lot lines actually came into focus, it was not, there was no way to leverage this kind of possibility. And so the simple changing of the language of the easement as such that allows for it to go with these parcels that are now separated out is the critical ingredient. So, thank you for considering it and thank you for understanding the, both the excitement of what's possible, but also the urgency of what won't happen if this vote doesn't happen the way we need it to do. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? If anyone is here to support or to talk or make a comment about resolutions, this is the time to.
May I make public comment?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Just one second. I saw you, Megan, but I'm going to allow first the people who is in person and then you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Tom Irwin. I live at 54 Central Avenue, Dalton, Massachusetts. I'm an advocate for a paint stewardship bill that is presently before our legislature for the seventh time. I am a retired engineer and physician who, while a member of the Dalton Waste Management and Recycle Committee, learned of paint stewardship while visiting a waste transfer station in New York, loved the idea, did some research and became an advocate for this important environmental legislation in Massachusetts, along with three other independent individuals. So what is paint and stewardship? Paint stewardship is a program that allows residents to discard unwanted liquid latex or oil-based paints without cost at participating paint retail stores any day the store is open. The retailers collect the returned paint and totes and when a tote is full, called paint care, the nonprofit created by paint manufacturers to manage discarded paint, they pick up the tote, haul it to a paint reprocessing facility where it's re-blended and sold to Habitat for Humanity and Restore and other entities like that. And the consumer's partner is paying an extra fee of up to $1 per gallon at the time of purchase. The benefits that East Hampton would see from such a law is that it would be a service that East Hampton residents value. An estimated 30% of latex returned to the Enfield, Connecticut Sherwin-Williams store comes from Massachusetts residents. Also, over 95% of the 525 Massachusetts residents dropping items off on household hazardous waste day that I spoke to and collected their signatures, signed the petition encouraging their legislator to become a bill co-sponsor. Paint stewardship begins addressing the solid waste issue by decreasing the total waste going to our landfills. Third, it is also significantly decrease the toxic waste currently being discarded inappropriately. It will also present no cost to municipalities and will decrease household hazardous waste day costs as demonstrated in our neighboring states of Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Vermont and New York, who all have the law. It will decrease greenhouse gases generated by the paint industry by approximately 4%. And finally, it will likely be a model for future product stewardship legislation that will dress mattresses, solar panels, plastics and tires. So why hasn't this bill passed previously? The main reasons are that it will only save approximately $2 million, which is big for you and I, but it's small for Massachusetts. Second, there is insufficient demand from constituents for the law, a result of too few people being aware of the law. While gathering over 2,000 petition signatures in support of the law, my experience has been that less than 5% of people have heard of the law. So in the next steps, presently, there are 25 representatives and 11 state senators sponsoring or co-sponsoring these bills with more actively considering becoming co-sponsors. However, to improve the chances this legislation passes this session, many more needed. Please therefore, consider requesting your state representative, Daniel Carey, and your senator, John Velez, become co-sponsors and join this important cause that will certainly benefit Massachusetts Senate's residents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Megan?
Okay. Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to jump on. Megan Harvey, I live at, on Button Road in East Hampton. I wanted to jump on and just vocalize my support again for the resolutions that will be discussed later in this meeting, supporting free access to materials at the public library and within our public school system in the district. I wholly support both resolutions. I thank the committees and the councillors for bringing forward these resolutions. It's a shame that we have to defend the First Amendment in this way, but I also think it's incredibly important that we have done so and we're sending a very clear message about the values in our city. And it really, you know, I wholly support it as a parent and as a community member, but also as a member of the current school committee. It just really is another example of a great partnership between the school committee and the city council, and I'm excited to keep seeing more of that. There was a committee meeting and several current school committee members and some candidates joined that meeting and sort of all spoke to these resolutions. I encourage folks to watch the recording at that meeting if you would like to see further specific discussion from school committee members. And then my last thought before I just, you know, I wasn't sure, when I was looking at the agenda, if there was a resolution that was coming forward during the agenda today against discrimination and against hate speak. I don't know if that's going to end up being on the agenda or not, but I just, given the recent events in our city and the distribution of, I don't even know what to call it, of material that was thrown around several neighborhoods in our city, I just want to voice thanks again that these are the kinds of things that the city council is voicing their opinion on and coming from a sort of a joint partnership all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Anyone else? Seeing none. Communication from elected officials, boards and committee. Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, I'm always happy to be here at city council meetings. This evening, I do wish that I were downstairs in the basement because the Nashwannic Pond Committee is having a meeting there. I recently learned that their program to prevent cyanobacteria blooms in Nashwannic Pond has successful for the second year in a row. And I wanted to give a huge thank you to all of the people that made that possible. To folks that don't know, they used a nature-based solution of using barley straw, which, when decomposing in water, releases elements like a hydrogen peroxide that kills off cyanobacteria, but also protects all of the animals and other plants that are in Nashwannic Pond. So, you know, this is a really remarkable step forward. Cyanobacteria is such a threat to many ecosystems and oftentimes municipalities resort towards, you know, harmful pesticides and chemicals and, you know, anything that would kill it off, but also kills other things in the process. So, you know, it's a source of pride for me that in our community, we have the kinds of people that volunteer for our, you know, boards and committees that can come up with these kinds of ideas and to do things that take care of our community in ways that I don't think anybody imagined 10 years ago. So, really remarkable stuff. I wish they were up here so I could thank them in this moment, but thank you to the Nashwannic Pond Committee for all the work that you do.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rist?
I'm sorry, I wasn't going to speak, but I am.
That's fine, because of a wrist.
School committee member Harvey reminded me that a situation involving the most recent events of the litter that was thrown into people's yards from neo-Nazis affected one of my family members, and I've decided that free speech is something we all live with in many cases. And we defend it. I would defend it. I would defend the rights of even the worst deplorables on the planet to speak. But what I don't tolerate is those of the silent majority, the vast majority of people who would never tolerate neo-Nazis or discrimination of any kind staying quiet. They don't want to get involved. I have noticed in my many years in government that those voices that want to speak hate happen to be very loud. We need to be louder against this kind of action. It's scary, but they're all cowards. We live here and they're in our community. They were in Westfield. They're everywhere. We need to be louder, fighting for that, not just at the council level, but everywhere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Rist. Councillor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo Chair Rist's comments. I think there's no place for that in our community. I also want to acknowledge just the global crisis that we're experiencing and members of the Jewish community and Palestinian communities are experiencing in the Middle East. As someone who has Jewish relatives, Jewish friends, Jewish neighbors, and certainly I represent Jewish members of this community, you know, I, when I think of my family and my friends, you know, I love them very much and I, you know, hold the trauma that they are experiencing and I want to reiterate that I love them very dearly. At the same time, I also have friends. Rebecca has former colleagues, former students who are Palestinian, and we equally love them and respect them and hold the trauma that they are experiencing currently. And I just, I hope that our global leaders can find some way of peace moving forward. So I just, I just want to acknowledge that as a person. The other thing I want to talk about is President Gomez and I have been working on a municipal leadership academy in collaboration with the mayor's office. And we are going to hopefully post the applications for that. We're looking for 15 to 20 people to participate in the academy. And it's something that's going to be, if you're accepted, we're hoping that, well, not hoping, it would be that you are expected to participate in the entire program, which would begin on January 4th and end on March 7th of next year. So we're going to have those applications out tomorrow. And we just want to encourage people to apply if you're interested. It's a great opportunity to, one, have face-to-face time with different directors in the various city departments, as well as an opportunity to learn about the different ways that you can be involved on commissions, committees, et cetera, to be involved and really just learn more about kind of the workings of city governance. And just want to encourage all of you, if you're interested, to apply.
Thank you, Councillor Denham. And I second everything you said about both situations. Any other councillor? Seeing none. Mayor's communication.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two things to read. I just want to comment on the litter that was on the, this isn't new. They've been here before. I think it is dangerous to say that they've visited and I think it's probable that some of them live here. And when we had similar antisemitic as well as racist marks made on our trees in conservation areas, I said then, I know I was, and got agreement from the council as well, somebody knows who's doing this in our community. So when you talk about being quiet or you talk about, you know, the silent, like, somebody knows. And I would just, if anybody knows, certainly anonymously, they could get ahold of the Detective Bureau or reach out to the ACLU or the ADL. So we really can rectify and look these folks right in the eye and say, not here. That said. I'd like to read a proclamation from my office to note and commemorate Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Day, which is October 19th, 2023. Whereas domestic abuse impacts people of every age, gender, identity, ethnicity, nationality, economic status and beliefs, and touches every community, including our city. Whereas victims suffer physical violence by an intimate partner that deprives them of security, safety, independence, health and wellbeing. Whereas cohesive control is recognized as a form of domestic abuse that includes verbal and emotional threats harassing texts, emails or similar electronic communications, uses economic abuse to restrict access to finances and seeks to violate victims from friends, family or support. Whereas domestic abuse is a crime that damages victims and children. It reshapes families and transcends generations. Whereas domestic abuse is a silent resident in our communers that linger due to a lack of understanding and awareness of its pervasiveness. Whereas the 193rd Massachusetts General Court is seeking greater protections for victims of intimate partner abuse. Whereas the city of East Hampton is committed to work with its law enforcement partners to believe victims and intervene for their best interest to maintain their personal safety, dignity and that of their dependents to prevent further harassment or abuse. Whereas the city of East Hampton affirms its dedication to providing a community where no one suffers the pain and hardship, the stigma caused by domestic abuse, and recognizes the advocate victim service providers and organization who work tirelessly to prevent domestic abuse and extend hope and healing to victims. Whereas I, Nicole LaChapelle, the mayor of the city of East Hampton, want to help victims become survivors and I do proclaim Thursday, October 19th, 2023, as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Day. Thank you for the opportunity to present that. I'll note there, Children's Advocacy Center, which helps along victims of domestic abuse, especially children, infants, who have been abused directly or are part of an abusive situation, reported a 25% increase in the last two years of victims coming to the center. We were able to do some ARPA funding for them, but this is something that's also very real and present. And I would ask anybody who's approached for support for several bills that are coming up around domestic violence to urge Representative Carey and Senator Velez to sign on. So now. I also, the, when the city council does resolutions or makes a statement, passes an ordinance, I usually sign it. But I also sometimes will make a comment. I almost said, yeah, okay. And I really was moved by the work of Councillor Denham and Gomez, what we've seen on the school committee, and then of course, recent exist. And I just want to add a statement to that in support of the city council resolution supporting S2447 and SD2673 and to request Representative Carey and Senator Velez to sign on. Thank you, President Gomez, for the opportunity to comment on business before council. A book is made from a tree. It's an assemblage of flat, flexible parts that are still called leaves, imprinted with dark pigmented squiggles. One glance at it and you hear the voice of another person, perhaps someone dead for a thousand years. Across the millennia, the author is speaking clearly and silently inside your head directly to you. Writing is perhaps the greatest human invention, binding together people, citizens of distant epochs and who never knew one another. Books break the shackles of time. It is proof that humans can work magic. That was said by Carl Sagan. And if the world ever needs some of that magic, we need it now. And it's not time to put limitations on free speech into libraries. And in my capacity, I fully support both resolutions put forward by President Gomez and Councillor Denham urging the passing of S2447, an act protecting against attempts to ban, remove or restrict library access to materials, and SD2673, an act regarding free expression, affirming that materials are appropriate for inclusion in school and a school library are based on a professional, a librarian's training and not on political or personal views. Further, I agree with the aforementioned city councillors to encourage Senator John Velez and Representative Dan Carey to support both bills. I ask that if passed by the council, President Gomez include these comments with both resolutions to our state legislative members. As we ponder the concept of banning books or labeling librarians as unfit to oversee our libraries, it introduces the potential danger of preserving a stagnant state of thinking and existence, the potential repercussions of censorship and limitations on book access as well as the role of librarians in preserving the enchantment and diversity of literature. It casts a shadow over the sources that have historically offered hope and inspiration to generations. Thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Correspondence announcement from the President of Vice President. I do have something really quick. I just want to make a comment about the trash that a group was bringing to some houses. And I'm calling it trash, but that was trash. As the only person of color at the council. As the only person of color at the council asking you, don't share, and this is the first time, probably the only time, that I'm going to ask not to share something that was on the news. Don't share that, because it's there, and that's what they want. They want us to share on Facebook, they want us to share everywhere. And we, if we do that, we are doing their job, and we shouldn't. Those flyers, that is trash, is attacking people like me, attacking people like my family, attacking people like your family. So again, please don't share that, because you're not helping anyone. Thank you. Report from Standing Committee Finance, Councilor Rist.
The Finance Committee will not meet again next week. The fiscal year 2024 tax classification is on hold. The values were recently sent to, or if they weren't sent today, probably on Monday, sent to the DOR. And we don't know how long that turnaround will be, but when they get them, the Board of Assessors will meet to give us tax classification. I anticipate that we won't be voting on this until the second meeting in November. At least, that's my hope. That concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rist. Public Safety, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting, so the only thing that I have to report is that our next meeting will be November 14th at 6:00 p.m. And I would love to, in the form of a motion, request an extension on the proposed resolution against antisemitism, which is from Councilor Zerrit, for 90 days, please.
Second. I have a motion and a second to, for an extension of 90 days for the resolution against antisemitism. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
Thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Derby. Appointment, Councilor Riley.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Committee last met on October 12th to discuss two mayoral appointments and a series of city employees who are up for reappointments. So just because of the nature of the appointments, I'm going to do them in three separate groups. So first, the Appointment Committee met with Daniel Zadonik and Nancy Stenberg, who are both mayoral appointments. Daniel is being recommended for the Board of Assessors with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. So for the council to know, Daniel has 37 years as a principal assessor and assistant assessor. Four years he served in the City of East Hampton, and 33 of which have been in the city of Hadley, town of Hadley. He has all of the necessary qualifications, like a Massachusetts accredited assessor, and all of the trainings that are required from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Assessors. And then also, he is a previous chair of the East Hampton Board of Assessors from 1994 to the year 2000. So this is work he's already done for us before. And then Nancy Stenberg is being recommended for the Public Library Association of East Hampton with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Nancy has been a school librarian in various capacities for 18 years. She was also formerly a Community Preservation Act Committee member in the year 2013 here in East Hampton. She was on the Southwick Board of Trustees for the library there in Southwick, Massachusetts, for six years in total, and also helped oversee the expansion of their library, which is experience that directly benefits East Hampton as we transition the library to its new location. I mean, we voted unanimously in favor of both of these appointees. I mean, they have all of the experience that we could want, but if there are any questions, I'm open to answering questions from the council.
Any councilor have any questions or comments about these two appointments?
All right. Then I move to appoint Daniel Zadonik to the Board of Assessors with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026, and Nancy Stenberg to the Public Library Association of East Hampton with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second for those two appointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
All right. And so next, we have all of the reappointments that were up for consideration. So this batch is all reappointments who are current city employees. Some of them, it is for their actual positions, which is the first group that I'll talk about. And the second group are city employees who serve in a volunteer capacity on some of our boards and commissions. So just to, you know, get this part out of the way, you know, we all know who all of these folks are. They're incredible servants to the City of East Hampton. There's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't reappoint all of them. But again, at the end, I will leave open the opportunity for any questions. So we have BJ Church for the Building Commissioner with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. Mark Tanner, our city solicitor, with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. Now, we did this last year, but just as an important note, the city solicitor position is reappointed at the end of every calendar year. So this is just same as last year. Then we have Cynthia Terrell for the Council on Aging Director with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. Jeff Bag, Director of Planning, December 31st, 2026. And then Emily Russo, Human Resources Director, December 31st, 2026. Is there any questions?
Any questions about these reappointments?
Yeah.
Seeing none.
Okay. So then I move to reappoint all of the aforementioned.
Five.
Yes. Can I do that? Can I do everybody in one? Yeah, perfect. Okay. With the term expiration dates that were previously announced.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint these five people. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor.
Aye.
Anyone against, abstention, motion passes.
All right. And then, so the second batch that we have, also city employees, but for volunteer boards and commissions. All of these appointees have an expiration date of December 31st, 2026. So we have John Mason for the Main Street Cemetery, Nicole LaChappelle, Main Street Cemetery, Barbara LaBombard, Man Hand Rail Trail Committee, and the Charity Funds Committee, Nicole LaChappelle for School Building Committee, Christopher Norris for the School Building Committee, and then Jeff Bag for the Commission on Disability. I didn't make.
Any councilor have any questions or comments?
Okay. All right. Then I move to reappoint all of the aforementioned reappointees to their terms with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint these seven members. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
All right. And then there are currently no new appointees before the committee. At a later date, we will discuss an alternative time for the Appointment Committee to meet to accommodate all of the members of the committee. So when that is announced, I will let you all know. Thank you. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Riley. Ordinance, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So ordinance is going to meet again on November 15th at 6:30.
November.
Yep, November. I'm going to second guess myself, Dan.
I can't believe it's already November.
November 15th at 6:30. And we are going to review, we're going to be talking about the Senior Tax Workout Program, but we also are going to be talking about the LED sign, electronic messenger, message sign ordinance. We, at our last meeting, we did kind of discuss some of the things that we think potentially would need to be looked at for that. And I think we're going to, we're going to look to discuss that further at our meeting. At our last meeting, we voted unanimously to set a public hearing for the amending of the city ordinances, classification and pay plan, to add a public health inspector. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for that item on November 1st at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing for November 1st at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
So just a reminder, we are meeting November 15th at 6:30. That is our next meeting in a location that is going to be at 50 Payson, and Barbara will tell me later. And I, we do have the, the Ordinance Review Committee final report, which, I apologize, has been on our agenda for a while. None of the items are pressing on there. We did, I don't know if people remember, we did take care of a lot of the items previously. There was a large batch of, you know, for example, we took out all the gendered language in the ordinances. And so we still have some movement to do on that. We will get to it. So I am going to ask for an extension on that. And since, you know, there's only one meeting between here and there, I might as well ask for it now. So in the form of a motion, I'd like to request 90 days on that particular item.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend 90 days, the Ordinance Review Committee final report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
Thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Derby. Property, Councilor Kosinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Property Committee was fortunate to be able to meet a couple of times since this matter was originally introduced. That's the easement agreement and a request by Mr. Bundy to amend that easement agreement. I must thank Mr. Bundy for his excellent presentation. I think he covered the matter very well, and I may be repeating in my comments, but I think they're important to go over again. So this agreement was between the mill owner and the City of East Hampton. The proposed changes were reviewed, two site visits were done. Due to the changes in city zoning, which allowed for zero, zero lot lines, that enabled buildings with no setbacks to be able to subdivide those properties. And here, in this case, we're very fortunate to have interest in subdividing areas that haven't been touched, I don't know how long, but this is parts of the mill that just have remained idle forever. So I'm grateful that we have that opportunity here. The proposal allow for each new owner to accept complete responsibility for the responsibilities that are now held only by Eastworks. So that is joint and severable. That means that both one and all will share full obligation to meet the obligations of the mill owners. So that is actually strengthening, I think, the city's position. And I would definitely recommend that we approve it. This has been reviewed by the city attorney, and the Property Committee approved 2 to 0 to recommend the approval. We do have before us Mr. Bag, the city planner, if there are any specific questions that maybe different counselors may have. Otherwise, we will require, I believe, six votes for this in the affirmative, since it's a matter of property. And the city, as an easement, that's a matter of property. So. Any questions?
Any councilor have any questions? Nope. Councilor Kosinski.
I move to authorize the mayor to amend the existing easement agreement dated September 23, 2013 by and between Eastworks LLP and the City of East Hampton by removing and replacing Section 9.6, covenants run with the land in its entirety, with the language reviewed and approved by the city solicitor and the Property Subcommittee, and which was submitted to the city council at their September 6, 2023 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the Eastworks easement revision request. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
This concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Kosinski. Rules, Councilor Rist.
Assistant President, the Rules Committee met last week and discussed the wonderful resolutions brought forward by yourself and Councilor Denham. Freedom to Read Resolution and the East Hampton Public Library Resolution regarding the non-censorship of books for any reason. We, it's sad that we do have to defend the First Amendment and the rights of our students, in this case of the schools, and our public to read what they'd like to read. We have to trust our librarians, and I have a daughter-in-law that is a librarian, and I cannot speak more highly of her ability. So these are unfortunately necessary in this day when books are being banned a lot of times for the reasons, for racist reasons, for reasons against the LGBTQ community, lots of reasons that I hope never find light of day in our wonderful community. Both of these resolutions, which I like for resolutions, support legislation, as the mayor mentioned. And our, I hope, unanimous approval of these resolutions will send a message to our representatives that these particular legislative acts need to be passed. They were approved 3 to 0 by the Rules Committee, and we had the fortunate testimony from a number of school committee candidates, almost all of them, and they all definitely supported the resolutions. I urge you, as Councilor Megan Harvey mentioned, I think I sent the copy of the Rules Committee meeting to all of you, the video. Listen to what they had to say, because they will be, some of them, our next school committee. And it's the schools that we have to defend the most. So we did approve it 3 to 0 without any changes to the language. And I would like to turn it over to Councilor Denham to read. And I think, Mr. President, if you would approve, that we should do a motion for each individual resolution. Councilor Denham. Oh, that's your job.
Councilor Denham.
I just want to make just a quick comment, Mr. President. So I think these resolutions are twofold. One is an affirmation of the work of our librarians and their commitment to the development of young people, in both the public library and the, as well as the schools. And the other piece is an affirmation for members of the community to be able to find themselves on shelves. And I think there is a lot of folks in communities, based on their identities, diverse identities, that for a very long time haven't been able to do that and still struggle to do that. And, you know, I think as outlined here, a lot of these books that are banned prevent that for no other reason than people's political opinion. And I think that is, creates trauma for young people and adults who are, you know, looking for themselves in the community. And I think one way of finding themselves in the community is through our libraries. I think the other thing that's really very important to articulate is that as someone who works on a college campus, who prepares young people for employment, there's a huge expectation in the workplace today for creating inclusive communities, expectation for employees to be non-biased, and expectation for people to work collaboratively in teams. And having access to such materials really just broadens the understanding of not only young people, but adults, et cetera. And so I just want to let people know that in both instances here with these resolutions, it's, this is an affirmation. this is an affirmation.
Thank you, Consul. Before you read it, any Consul want to make a comment or say something before Consul Denham read the resolutions? No, I just want to make a quick comment. Yes. It's 2023. Believe it or not, we're still talking about this. We shouldn't. Should be criminal to ban books. People should have the freedom, the freedom to read any book. History book, LGBTQ+ community books, Latino books, Black books. Everybody should be able to read books. I guess we don't learn anything about history because we keep repeating it. And we should stop. We should read about the history. We should learn. We should read. We should open our minds to have a better world. It's that simple. And again, yes, it's 2023, and we're still talking about this. Consul Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in the form of a motion, this is a resolution of the East Hampton City Council supporting the mission and vision of East Hampton Public Library. Whereas, the First Library Association of East Hampton was organized in 1792, just seven years after the incorporation of the town. And whereas, the East Hampton Public Library offers services for 16,032 East Hampton residents as well as patrons and visitors from surrounding area communities every year. And whereas, the East Hampton Public Library is, in cooperation with the City of East Hampton, honors our history with focused intent on the future. And whereas, the East Hampton Public Library's mission is to support and enrich the lifelong learning of the diverse community of the greater East Hampton area. And whereas, the East Hampton Public Library abides by the vision to provide its diverse patrons with educational and recreational resources, programming, and technology they need to participate in and advance a democratic society in a safe and welcoming space, foster a lively cultural and lifelong learning center, and defend intellectual freedom and patron confidentiality. And whereas, the city supports the East Hampton Public Library in the freedom of inquiry, open access to information, and exploration of ideas. Whereas, the role of the East Hampton Public Library is to collect and make available diverse works and information reflective of many perspectives and lived experiences. Whereas, a vital role of the East Hampton Public Library is to provide each individual access to information that encourages curiosity, inquiry, and the development of empathy without placing a higher value on one's individual's identity over another's. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the East Hampton City Council that the City Council hereby supports the freedom to read and opposes book banning and other attempts to limit patrons' access to information. The City Council shall take no action to censor, suppress, remove, monitor, or place age restriction on ideas or information in our public library. The City Council also respects the professional qualifications, integrity, and care that our librarians and library staff bring to our community and library patrons. The City Council stands firmly with the mission and vision of the East Hampton Public Library, which is a vital part of our democratic fabric and provides knowledge access for all. Be it further resolved by the East Hampton City Council that it hereby calls on the Commonwealth to pass Senator Jake Olivera's Bill S. 2447, an act protecting against attempts to ban, remove, or restrict library access to materials, and requests Representatives Carey and Senator Villas to support the legislation.
I second the motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of the East Hampton City Council supporting the mission and vision of the East Hampton Public Library. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Consul Denham.
In the form of a motion, the East Hampton City Council Resolution in Support of Freedom to Read. Whereas, the East Hampton City Council recognizes that East Hampton Public School Library, or School Library, provides East Hampton students and staff equitable access to print and digital resources critical to supporting 21st century teaching and learning. And whereas, the City Council further recognizes that certified librarians and library specialists serve a critical role in increasing student achievement by supporting, collaborating, and co-teaching with classroom teachers in reading development, integrating information and technology literacy skills into the content curriculum, and utilizing their professional knowledge and judgment in the selection of books and other materials. Whereas, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects free speech and the freedom to read and write. Whereas, now, as always in our history, reading is among our greatest freedoms. Whereas, the freedom to read a rich, diverse collection of books and other materials is essential for a strong democracy. Whereas, during the first half of the 2022-23 school year, PEN, America's Index of School Book Bans, listed 1,477 instances of individual books banned, which affects 874 unique titles, an increase of 28% compared to the prior six months of January to June 2022, during which the total instances of book bans affected over 800 titles, which equated to over 100 titles removed from student access each month, with these bans occurring in 37 states. Whereas, an increasing number of book bans have departed from best practice guidelines outlined by the American Association of School Librarians. Whereas, book bans seek to impose restrictions on all students and families and would substitute the political, ideological, or cultural preferences of those calling for such bans for those of all members of the school community. Whereas, book bans have multifaceted harmful consequences on students who have a right to explore a diverse range of stories and perspectives, students from historically marginalized backgrounds who benefit from seeing themselves represented in literature, teachers and librarians who are working under increasingly hostile scrutiny that has chilling effect on teaching and learning, and parents and other caregivers who value openness, tolerance, and acceptance for diverse viewpoints, perspectives, and opinions in their children. Whereas, in the first six months of 2023, 30% of the unique titles banned were books about race, racism, or feature characters of color, and 26% of the unique titles banned had LGBTQ+ characters or themes. Whereas, books addressing death, grief, mental illness, and suicide are increasingly targeted alongside nonfiction books that discuss feelings and emotions written for teenage and young adult audiences that confront these topics frequently. Whereas, soft censorship, the quiet removal or hiding of books, presents a subtle change that may be obscuring the magnitude of the problem. Whereas, in Massachusetts, challenges to books quadrupled from 2021 to 2022, according to data from the American Libraries Association, which included challenges that specifically targeted LGBT+ issues and BIPOC or other minoritized communities. Whereas, a 2022 poll found that over 70% of parents opposed book banning. And whereas, in 1982, the United States Supreme Court ruled in Board of Education versus PICO that schools may not remove books based on narrowly partisan or political grounds, as this kind of censorship will result in official suppression of ideas. Whereas, the City of East Hampton supports parental rights to choose the age appropriateness for their child and rights to dialogue about critical decisions with their local school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council expresses concern about the spreading problem of book banning and proliferating threats to freedom of expression in East Hampton's schools, and reaffirms the commitment to supporting writers' freedom of expression and the freedom of all East Hampton children to read books without government censorship. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council calls for the passage of Representative Julian Sears' Bill SD 2673, an act regarding free expression emphasizing that any determination by a school library teacher licensed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or in the absence of such school library teacher, the school employee responsible for the selection of library materials and the use of school library materials and facilities, that materials are appropriate for inclusion in a school library shall be based on their professional training and not on political or personal views. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council calls on all cities and local school districts and educational institutions to follow outlined best practice guidelines when approaching challenges to books. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council expects our local schools and educational institutions to protect the rights of students to learn and the ability of educators and librarians to teach students, including by way of providing students with the opportunity to read a wide array of books reflecting a multitude of viewpoints and perspectives. Be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council supports Representative Julian Sears' Bill SD 2673, an act regarding free expression, and will send a copy of this motion to Representative Dan Carey and Senator John Villas.
I second the motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of the East Hampton City Council Resolution in Support of Freedom to Read. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Thank you, Consul Denham and Consul Rest. New business, Consul Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have to approve the warrant for four city councilors at large, five precinct city councilors, and six school committee members. So I would, in the form of a motion, request that we approve that warrant after I say that there's early voting access--
By mail.
By mail.
By mail.
And there is a question on the ballot.
And there is a question on the ballot, and it's non-binding, and it would be called question number one.
Yes. There was a motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the city election warrant. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Look like we do everything we have on our agenda. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Have a great evenings, everybody.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
We got some stuff to sign.
Thank you, everybody who was participating online, too.